So I will call the February 27th meeting of the Planning Commission to Order at 6:10. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Rebecca Oberholzer?
Present.
Sean Brendan?
Here.
And Gail Nichols?
Present.
And Jamie Porter did say that she was not going to be here this evening.
Okay, so she's absent and excused, and we do have a forum. So, thank you. Will you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? The Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America, a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next item on the agenda is consideration of the agenda. Does anybody have any changes? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Thank you. Motion to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next item is consideration of the consent agenda, which is the Planning Commission meeting minutes from January 23rd. And I had a couple of corrections to these, which are, on page 1, under the oath of office, item 2 for Sean, I suggested, or would like to suggest adding at the end of, appointed to the Planning Commission by the City Council for three years, adding term ending January 19th, 2028, so that the end date is memorialized. And then on page 2, under 8B, Chair Oberholzer stated that she would like to try having the citizen input after all business starting at the next meeting. I'd like to add a new sentence that says, "The move is in response to a citizen request."
Sounds good.
And will the minutes be approved as planned?
Aye, a second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion to approve the minutes as amended is approved. The next item of business is announcements and correspondence. You have in your packets the City Council meeting minutes from January 22nd and from February 5th. Any questions or comments? And I'd like to just make an additional announcement. Oregon Government Ethics Committee filing will be starting March 15th, so you should be getting emails to remind you to file. The filing is due by April 15th.
And Sean, you will have an invite from OGE-C, O-G-E-C dot gov.
And I have to file and...
It's called a statement of interest.
Oh, okay. I think I saw it, maybe not.
It's due, what'd you say, April 15th? It's due April 15th. They'll remind you if you don't reply timely. Once you've done one, which you have, you know, it's very easy, basically, to make sure the information is still the same and then...
You just update it every year or whatever?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
It's very simple. The next item, for anybody interested, is the city's going to host shredding on Saturday, March 22nd, from 10 to 12.
Saturday, March 22nd.
So if you have material you've been saving up to have shredded, the city will have space in their shred truck to bring.
It's that little box.
I am still waiting on the shred company to confirm with that date.
Oh, okay.
But hopefully, I'll have that Monday.
Okay.
All right, so that is the tentative date.
Time? 10 to 2, or 10 to 12?
10 to noon.
That's a very handy thing to do, thank you.
Can I make one more announcement, Rebecca?
Yes, please.
Also, we're doing the ethics training with the Oregon Government Ethics Commission here on June 25th. And again, this is tentative time, but it sounds like it's going to be 10 a.m. It'll be for a few hours.
June 25th?
June 25th.
Day of the week, is that, Lila?
Money luck. It is a Wednesday.
Wednesday. And what time did you say?
10 a.m.
Okay. Then it's all day.
I think they're just doing ethics. I think it should only be a few hours. I'd say 2 to 3.
Okay.
And we should have, they're going to check on a couple of things, and then get us a link, so we should be able to register for that as soon as, and I'll let you down there.
Okay. We have time for that, so...
Yes.
And I don't know about O-G-E-C, but I know DLCD and their training sometimes will make the presentation available afterwards, in case people can't attend but want to take the training, so we'll see how that shakes out. Do you want to come here for them?
Yep, we're going to stay here.
And if it's online, you might be able to sign in from home to take it, if you want to? We'll see.
Yeah, I can ask if it's going to be an online as well, yeah. I think they did that at the FEC. I went to one in January, so they had it online as well.
Oh, but you're hosting other cities here, is that right? Okay. Is that the same as the one that was at the event center?
The one in January? Yes.
I went to one, I went to a training at the, oh, that was nonprofit board, though. Forget it.
I didn't see you there.
I was not there. Okay, the next item of business is to schedule the next Planning Commission meeting, which would be Thursday, March 27th. Does that seem okay for everybody? Okay.
How much should work?
Okay. 6:00 a.m., March 27th.
I'm off, say tonight, who's going to tell you that there will be a replacement for me dining?
Food.
All right.
Allowed it.
Thank you.
I'm heading into my trap season, so this is where I get busy. But that one will, I'll be able to attend, but April, May, anywhere, I have a lot of cooking commitments.
Okay. So we should probably try to finish the last remaining changes to 1:55, so we can get those in the process of being finalized by staff and ready for a final review, so we can go to the council or whatever the next steps are going to be. Keep that in mind. We're very close to finishing that anyway, so just keep that in mind. Okay, so the next item of business is called Concept Assistance for Fish Mill Lodge. So Concept Assistance has not been used often, but it is allowed in our current code. It is, as it says in our code, and as I've written on the notes here, it's a discretionary informal meeting between an individual and planning staff or the Planning Commission, where a development concept is presented and general guidance is requested or discussed. So the, there's no application, so we're not making a decision. We're not able to make recommendations for changes to an application. Basically, we're taking a look at the proposal, the rough proposal that the owners of Fish Mill have submitted, it's also in your packet, and going through it to, carrying it to our code to see if any issues stand out before they get too far along. So it gives us a chance to check our code, to see if their ideas are allowed or not allowed, and then we can give them some guidance about where to look in the code for the things that we've discussed, and they can decide how they need to proceed. So... Is there a can of soda or juice in there?
Yeah, yeah.
You sure?
Yes, help yourself.
So in your packet is a cover letter that our permit tech drafted, presumably, to describe the idea that the new owners of Fish Mill have. There are photos included and some maps, we'll take a look at those. So... Fish Mill has been around for a really long time. I don't know exactly how long, but a really long time. And currently has some individual cabins that are rented, a tiny motel, and space for RV parking. The new owners would like to do away with the RV parking and put in tent cabins?
Yeah, you were saying.
Right?
Yeah.
I didn't think, yeah.
Where is it?
And they want to develop some space on the property as a central location for gatherings like weddings and classes, community events of that sort. Yeah, so you have a zoning map that shows Fish Mill. It's the last red dot way down at the bottom of the map.
Oh, that's, that's down here.
That's it? Uh-huh.
Okay.
Okay, so...
So this is where we're at, right here.
So, that's Fish Mill, uh-huh.
Okay, so the public garage, then, you're still pretty sure the public garage is right here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And Fish Mill does have its own boat dock, which the new owners said they would like to improve. So, and then behind the zoning map is a blown-up map of the property in relation to the various streets in the area. And the river access.
Yeah, I've been by this.
Have you?
Yeah, I go fishing, and I've gone. So one of, I know the person that has a dock over here, we actually broke down and one of my buddies' boats, and we had to stop.
Okay. Okay.
So, yeah, I know where that is.
So... So I thought, so this property is in the Community Commercial Zone. So I think it might make sense to start with the Community Commercial Zone code, which is... Which is 1:55 to 2.2. Which starts on page, should be 38 here of your copy. So... It says permitted land uses. Any use permitted outright or conditionally in the R1 zone, which is the residential district. And then it lists grocery stores, stores selling bakery products, dairy products, et cetera, business and professional offices, financial institutions, nurseries, clinics, restaurants, barber beauty shops, curio and gift shops, boat sales, manufactured home parks, travel trailer parks, rental facilities for boats and recreational vehicles, post offices, motels, churches, tourist parks, laundromats, other uses similar to the above.
So it says motels.
Says motels.
So you have a motel there, and you want to change it so when they can get rid of the RVs and do their camping?
Correct.
Okay, the big thing is, do they have enough parking for that?
That is the question. So... They currently have space for... They currently have 12 RV spaces, and they want to put in six safari tents to replace those 12.
Okay, so if I, my logic of that is, they're replacing a spot where they could park a vehicle with a fixed thing, right? But they're still having a spot, corresponds with the fixed spot. You're having one-on-one correspondence.
Correct.
One tent, one parking spot. If they're going to go, we want to do 12 of these things, but not have 12 parking spaces, then that would be where I'd attempt. But they're reducing, they're reducing the revenue source better than they need it. So having 12 RVs there, they're going to charge per stall, right? Reducing it down to six.
Yes. So theoretically, there would be enough parking. Plus, they have noted in their layout that they are planning to provide 10 additional parking spaces to accommodate additional guests. I don't know where those would go, but...
Yeah, well, they have their motel, so what is their plan with their motel, whether they can keep that?
They have not said.
So where is the motel parking? That is my question to that.
It's right in front. See that?
I see a training field.
This is a little driveway that circles around in the front, and that's where the motel parking is.
This is one that I think we probably have to go with that.
Might have to. So...
But what is next to the cabins over here? I mean, it looks like a little parking lot right there.
Yeah, I see a car.
I haven't been there in a few years, so... But I don't think you can park right in front of the little cabins, but I'm not sure. Which side of the cabins? It's over here, isn't it?
It would be nice to just have some, like, I see the picture, it would be nice to have a schematic with dimensions.
Yes, and at some point when, and if they decide to go forward with development, they would have to provide all of that in a site plan.
A site plan, a sketch, and broken down, like, cool, how many parking spots? Like, you see this, this is what they have, tentative. It's an aerial, right? You know, they want six, and this is where they're...
And it's six there across from the cabins.
Yeah, and then they put, you know, six parking spots right here in this land. So they have some, but it would be interesting for us to, I'm a visual person, so I'd still...
Yes, and so in, let's just check something here. If people have had, you know, something pretty substantial RV that's sitting there, you'd have to have a truck or whatever you want to be moving. So in the residential zone, we have a chart that tells us how many parking spaces are required. And we have one in the commercial zone as well. So... That's on page 69 here, if you wanted to look at it. So for motels, the required parking space is one space per lodging unit plus one for every four restaurant seats, if that's applicable. So in any development plans, we would need to make sure that they're meeting the parking space requirements.
So their coffee shop needs to have, if they have four seats in their coffee shop, then needs to have at least one?
That's correct.
Is how I interpret that.
That is absolutely correct.
Okay. So that's the big thing, I know, with things and parking in that area, because you don't want them to then try and go, oh, let's just go around and go park at the public garage where people want to use that, because that's in the ballpark. But there's also the post offices right down there, too.
Yep, so parking would be a concern along those same, along that same thought. Ingress and egress is a little tight in there.
Okay, I'm getting out of it.
Uh-huh, and so it seems like it might be a concern of perhaps the fire departments? But if they wanted to go through with the proposal, we might want to mention something along those lines.
Now, are those the cabins, like, these four? These four cabins, do these have, then, the access to the river right here?
I don't know, I don't think so.
Okay.
I don't know, though. I think they just have the one dock.
Yeah, the dock, I can just remember this.
Okay. The... The other thing that's not clear in our code, and I think is one of the reasons why the permit tech has shunted it over for us to talk about, is that these are tents. And in our residential zone, we don't allow tents as dwelling units. So... Is that a concern that we would have?
Not residential, but this is commercial residential.
Yeah, so... Under the commercial district, it does say, "Any use permitted outright or conditionally in the R1 district." So if you pop over to R1, which is... Which is on page 30. It says permitted land uses. The following types of buildings and uses are permitted, subject to general provisions and exceptions.
My question is, what's the difference between this and the yurts that we have right there?
Well, that is an excellent question. I would like to point out that as far as I know, that yurt was never permitted.
But it's still there.
It's still there, I don't know why, but...
So we have a yurt there, so if we're going to impose that, then the person is going to say, they have a yurt, so...
That is a possibility.
And that's, they run out of yurt. I don't know. Or then are we going to deny them, and then you're going to have a legal battle, well, that person...
We don't know.
That person has a yurt, and you're denying me, I want to see the city.
That's a concern, that's a legitimate concern. Glamping tents, I don't even think were around in 2006. No. Any, I mean, anyone. I don't think they were.
I think you, you could call it a glamping tent, it's just a campus tent. They've been around for...
Well, campus tents have been around, but designed in the way glamping tents are with bathrooms and...
I don't, I think this, does that have a bathroom?
At least one, I mean, I've seen in, oh, I've seen in Idaho. And it looks like there is a tiny bathroom in here. We can, a bathroom, a shower. There's a bathroom in there. Yeah, see that out there? So if that's the case, then another concern would be, is their septic system adequate for those six additional bathrooms?
Well, if they had RVs, you'd think...
They had RVs, there were 12.
Their RV hookups, we don't know if they're dry camping RV setups, so that I don't know. We don't know if those are full hookup or if they're dry with a dump station.
Correct.
That's a question.
And the permit, there are 12 of them.
Again, but you could have 12 dry, that just have water and electric, but not separate. And then say, oh, you got to go dump it down in a minute and come back.
Yes. Yes, so...
There's some questions that you gotta, you gotta toss out.
Adequate septic would be a concern and a, and a question.
Is the drainage field left to handle that and...
Yeah. Okay. So going back to the tent versus site-built or manufactured home idea. There would be a question on whether or not we would be able to allow the tents. Yes. But as you, as you mentioned, there is a yurt already. And so even though it's not legally permitted, as far as I know, it does set something of a precedent. So for development of new tents, would fire safety be a concern?
That is a fire question, I, I personally. That is, what are, what are the building requirements and...
Because a stick-built structure has certain fire requirements. Does a tent, and what would they be? And would the tents qualify for that? So that would be something, I think we would want to have something included in any formal proposal that says these are, these are fireproof, fire-retirement, or they have provisions for fire safety. Where is the yurt in relation to this? Okay, so where's your code, where's your zoning map?
So if you're looking at the zoning map, right here.
It's right behind us.
So this is the proposed site, right here. And where it's where the kayak site, station is.
This is the motel that's behind us. And then they, they're down here on the river. On the, on the lake just before the river? Uh-huh. Okay.
It's on the river.
Yeah, it's on the river. You turn around and go into the river, and then it's right there.
That's right, where they have their dock that goes, that launches the kayaks, there's a yurt that you can rent. So that is my, this is...
They already have, so that's being used as a rental space.
I believe so, so...
Yep.
And then Darling says, what, they have that little... It's not a, it's not a campus thing, it's on their dock that they let people sleep in, right?
Constructed. Yeah. Yeah, it's a little wooden house, like, one-room deal, yes.
So that's another interesting slippery slope that you have going on.
Don't believe that has a permit either, but that's neither here nor there.
But if you're moving forward, then I say, moving forward, these are the things that are... You know?
Yep. So... So what else would be a concern that we might want to bring to their attention to consider if they're developing a proposal to go forward?
What is their body reserve? If there's any future draw on water, where do you think it, is there a water tank?
So water would be a good, a good one. I believe they get their water from Silk Coast, but in the summertime in particular, we know that Silk Coast isn't always the greatest source. So what's the water source? Or backup water source?
And also tea, the salt, but they're pulling it from that outlet in the river. And sometimes the salt water gets up into there.
Really?
I've heard that.
Public dam? So water source?
That is a rumor, but the proof of it is, it can get up into that area.
Okay, so water source and backup?
They got water sewage.
Power.
Road, egress party.
Which is, which of these is the road? So where's your, where's your road? This one right here? So we go across the bridge. And you go up here. And this is a pretty, this is a narrow, steep road that goes along, and then turns down in here, and then another road goes this way, behind this property, and then there's a house with a red roof on it that's right there. It's very narrow. And then there's an egress from right around in here. It goes up into that very narrow road. So road issues. You know, maybe... I don't know how they would get an RV in there, to tell you the truth.
But they've done it. There are a lot of people that she wants stuff in here that I would cry trying to do. Like, I am not creating a trailering.
But yeah, the road, the road going into it and coming out of it and behind it are very, very narrow.
Do they have enough visibility? Do they need, like, mirrors and stuff that will help with traffic or? I mean, I don't, I don't know. But what, how, what level of control are we? You know, if it's, if this is a, if this is commercial, then I'm thinking it's a public safety. And if we're gonna do it right?
Yes.
Not, this isn't a residential permit, this is a commercial permit, right?
Yes.
So...
Yeah, this is a commercial property, so, so traffic safety would be a concern also. A lot of the roads in West Lake are pretty narrow, super narrow. Like, like one lane. Yeah.
Yeah, like when you're trying to go to Ada and stuff like that.
Well, well, even just right in here, when you're trying to, when you're trying to get the, a friend who lives down here in Jackson. And these roads are all tiny. Yes. Yes. So traffic safety, that ties into your ingress and egress.
So does that mean that we're trying to limit the kind of events that they have? Because, I mean, if you have a wedding, right, I mean, you have a hundred people trying to get in and out of there.
That would be a concern. You know, where would they park? Right. There's a...
There's not a...
Because the...
Unless they booked out all, you know, the whole venue. And like, great, if you're gonna hold a wedding, they have to book out the whole venue. And this is how they spot. And if you're trying to have, like, people here enter venue, you don't have enough parking.
So, yeah.
Like, that's where you're gonna have to be, like, if you wanna have a venue here, this is, this is, in order to hold this, you have to have this permit to do it. Like, tell them what they ask.
In the event? Activity brings other septic in for considerations and...
Well, then they have to bring in, like, we're parties or something. You're gonna have to make a bylaw or something that says, we're giving you a conditional use permit, but you have to do this.
Because we do that to people in their homes, right? Yeah, we do. So...
Like, I think your wedding venue is, that's a stretch for the area.
Then I'm thinking alcohol, and then I'm, you know...
Well, they're, they're, I mean, but they're a coffee shop, they don't have to do that.
Right, right, but I mean, usually have a wedding without...
Champagne.
Right. Alcohol, I mean, in a very weird way.
Yeah. So, so...
That's true.
Again, again, at this point, we're not requiring a conditional use permit. We're not limiting what they can do. We are talking about the proposal and concerns that they maybe should be aware of.
Oh yeah, your concern is, how are you going to support a wedding venue for parking? And, you know, you're gonna have a caterer, you're gonna have this, where, where are they gonna be? How are you gonna support that with that impact on the community and egress?
Yes, so not just ingress and egress, but also the quantity, the amount of parking.
Yeah. You asked, your, one of our concerns is, you want to do this, whereas your, your site plan and layout are not conducive to doing that safely in our city.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Uh-huh.
Like, we're great with you doing, how you hold camping, not sort of glamping, but wedding venue, I don't know, say, you have your inherent barrier to parking and dress for that particular thing on your proposal.
And we know they can't park on their drainage field. We don't know if, now, this site has been here, I mean, this development as it is, has been there for a long time, so I don't know if it was ever, if the septic system ever illustrated the replacement field. It probably was, but...
But you're redoing a site plan, so they, part of the code would say that you have to, right?
I, I don't know.
Or they have a...
That's a county, county decision. Yeah. So adequate septic. They can't park on their drainage field. So their, the response for, do you have adequate parking, would be, just park right there.
Oh yeah, you can't.
No, so...
I would say, how are you going to prevent people from parking on your drainage field? Because not everybody knows that.
Um, yeah. Well, then I don't know it's drainage field, I mean, usually doesn't have a sign that says this is a drainage field.
It's marked on the map.
No, but I mean, like, your guests.
No, the guests, that would be a concern, that is, that you need to prevent people from parking here because this impacts the city, and this is a liability to you and the city. If, if sewage leaks into the lake, which is right here, then it's a big issue because people get their drinking water from this lake. Therefore, here is, here is what you have to do if you're going to do this, continuing forward. Since you are now the proud new owner of this property. What are you doing? That was part of the risk of buying properties.
And so part of, part of this discussion also is, they're new to the area, they just bought the property, they have a great idea for it, but they really need to be educated on the sort of special usages applicable to Westlake and Dune City. So this is what we'll outline for them to take into consideration, right? So the other thing, now, somewhere in our code, somewhere over here in community commercial, is something about... I don't see where it is now, but noise issues. If there's a wedding, there are neighbors very close by. And so does carry, so noise somehow would be a concern for neighbors.
So what is the code? We need to figure out the commercial code for when they're supposed to not be... Like, for example, in Florence, a society slogan, gun club can operate all the way up till nine o'clock at night.
Oh!
You can shoot guns all the way up till nine. And they have neighbors and all that stuff. So what is our residential business? What are business, what are, at what point do businesses have to cease terminating?
I think we don't actually have that specified in this code.
So that's something that we're...
We just have a nuisance, which right now says seven PM.
Seven PM, you're not gonna have a wedding, and at seven PM, like, you could, you could probably reasonably ask them to stop by nine or ten, but seven PM, you're not gonna have that. I feel the wedding aspect of their proposal is not going to fly for several candidates. Main thing is parking. Like, it's a great idea, but you don't have the space for it.
And the, the other thing, of course, that they are limited by is they, they have to meet the setbacks for the riparian and shoreline zones, so they can't say...
They can't encourage them to say it.
Yeah, they can't say, well, we'll just move some parking down there by the lake. So they wouldn't be able to do that.
Yes, you could find, like, four way. They pay for that yet, or is this one just getting bigger and bigger? Or you can't talk about it? I know a guy.
So... Let's see. So over in our existing code, section one-five-five-point-three is called design standards. That starts on about page sixty-two, yeah? So that further discusses access and circulation, vehicular access and circulation. Number of access points, driveway standards, and fire access. So those would be the references we'd want to call out to them, to be sure they, they are checking.
That they...
Uh-huh.
Park seat. See, I have no problem with this. Like, I think their wedding and dinners idea is not going to fly for their art workshop, their yoga lessons, that, and their tent. They have their wedding tent, and they want to do, like, some yoga and stuff like that. And you just need to make sure that you have parking for that event. You can, you can reasonably say that twenty people could show up to that and have five parking spots.
Right, so...
Because they could cartel for that. But you're not gonna have a hundred people and only have five parking spots.
There's also a section in our code that's called, it's on page 69, it's called Common Facilities for Mixed Uses. And it's, this is a little confusing, but it says, "In the case of mixed uses, the total requirements for off-street parking spaces shall be the sum of the requirements for the various uses, or five and a half spaces for 1,000 feet of gross floor area, whichever provides the greatest amount of parking." I don't know if that's completely relevant, but.
Okay, so, they have 625 feet of floor area, if it's 25 by 25.
Okay.
Right, well, I didn't use the circle. I did a square.
Okay.
Right, work, work. So, with, by that definition, right, you just have to interpret that as that you need five and a half parking spaces for that structure because it says whatever is greater.
Yeah. Yeah, so, so parking, any way we're looking at it, parking and the ingress and egress could be large issues for them.
So to add this, add this wedding multipurpose space, which, is this a stick-built building, or is this a?
According to their drawing, that was gonna be a timber frame, that looks like. Or maybe we don't have it, I have it here.
We have that little picture that's in this page, right?
A little, yeah, so like a round barn or a timber frame type of structure. Okay. What else jumps out at you? Let's see here.
Is there, is there any concern about the name of this place being Florence? Sorry, what was it? Is there any concern about this being known as the Florence Waterfront Hotel, even though it's far from Florence?
Well.
I think a lot of people have, I mean, far from Florence is seven miles.
We can't, I don't know, can we tell them what to call it?
No, we can't, I don't, I don't think we can.
I, personally, when I first saw it, I went, what? Yeah, but we can't tell them what to name our hotel.
They're trying to piggyback on Florence's draw and allure, and, you know, we want businesses to come, so, you know. Yeah, you gotta get commerce somehow, you gotta get revenue, so. What do we get out of this as far as the city? Like, they have to have a business permit, do we get anything?
Eighty-five bucks for their business license.
Now.
So how do we change that so it makes it so that they're?
Do we not have permits for events?
We do.
And we're gonna get permit money for them.
But would that, would that be for commercial properties? I mean, that's typically a residential.
That's a good question. That's a good question.
So that's a question, like, you're, if you're running a business, don't they, you're having a motel, so they have to pay some sort of fee, right?
They pay it to the state, and then we get a.
To the, yeah, to the county, right?
Yeah.
Hotel motel tax.
Yeah.
So we would get a portion of.
Transit launching tax.
Correct.
And then you're having, self, the coffee shop is doing commerce, so do you have a? Those are, those are things that you're trying to figure out, like, do they have to pay a fee every year, do you?
Business license, eighty-five dollars.
Just once a year, or?
Now, would the business license be a license for the coffee shop? And a license for the RV park? And a license, I mean, not the RV park, but for the.
Each separate entity.
Yeah, function, each separate function.
That's something maybe we should ask the city council about that.
Yeah, there's a lot of things. Basically, our business license code currently only talks about contractors acquiring a business license. So, not even technically any businesses.
That's right.
Does not need to pay a business license fee.
That is correct.
I forgot and busted up.
So how do you fix that?
That needs to be changed by the council.
Cool.
There's a motel in here, isn't there?
So we need, we need to get people to pay their fair share of things if they're driving on.
There's something for the city council to address.
We have talked about it.
Okay, so, there's that. Who's that?
Where's my, where's my hat?
So Myrtle Wood Lane is on the other side of Fish Mill, and that's private. And it doesn't let traffic go in that way, I don't think, now. But Lake Boulevard behind it, is that city or is that county right there? Do you know?
I'll tell my head, I can grab the, we talk about roads.
Uh huh.
Yeah, let's go grab that.
So, and I, and I, this isn't in our code, but maybe just as a, a thought for the new owners to consider is, perhaps, I don't know what you would call it. A neighborhood awareness meeting, or get-together, or letter to the neighbors to say, hi, where are your new neighbors? Is, we want to do this on this property to, to get some community feedback from the immediate neighbors as well.
Yeah. Bad idea.
It's not anything that I think we can inquire, but part of concept assistance is getting community feedback, so we could.
They wanna be good neighbors.
We could, you know, we could mention that that would be a, I don't know if it's a concern, but an addition that they might endeavor.
Most of Lake Boulevard is Lang County.
Okay.
So much. An issue for, for them in any of these things to consider is the, a budding juror, or the jurisdictions that they're gonna have to deal with. And it's not just Dune City, it's the county for the septic, it's the county for the road, it's, it's not, not in people's minds when they are living in property.
Good point.
How for businesses, for running up business, this is a business, but residential thing, so you have extra layer. That's interesting, I didn't know we did have, that we have businesses that are paying things inside the city. Cool, so we got your back.
We have a commercial zone, but we have no commercial.
No commercial, no commercial revenue going to the city for upkeep and things that we need, so they're operating for free. And that's cool, we gotta fix that part. I know people are not gonna be happy about it because they have to pay more.
Yeah, we don't have tax base, so we don't have.
It's, it has come up over the years and was pretty much resolutely rejected.
Unfortunately.
We have license fees for Airbnbs, it don't make sense that we have license fees for motels.
Yeah, but if you're gonna, if you're gonna do it for one, you gotta do it for all, you can't just. And then your grand, grandfather and certain things look okay, well, moving forward, this is what we have to do, and everybody has to. Good in the order.
Anything else that you can think of?
I don't think we, just making sure that their power grid too, they have enough. If you're putting all these, like, all that electrical and wiring, all your infrastructure, you're doing that, your electric power.
Electrical.
So then we go back to the. There are wells, is that, we said that, over in this area?
I, I don't.
Their own wells?
I don't know.
I think they get their water from the lake, but I'm not sure.
They probably pull it from the lake.
But I'm not sure.
But we, we put the concern of water parking, I'm gonna say power sewer.
And that's a really good idea because that, again, that property was developed years ago, and it truly will not be up to.
Yeah, it has to be up to code.
Standards, so, yeah, excellent idea.
It's like when I was building my outside, I put everything up to current code. So you're, if you're, if you're removing things, you have to bring it up to current code.
And?
It's just like when you renovate a house, if I'm a contractor and I bust into something and it's not current code, I have to, obligated to fix that. And that's why the other game, if I bust this open and it's not done right, I can lose my license.
So, in the notes that I dropped it up for you about this, I copied some info from the comp plan about commercial land use. And, for example, it says, "Existing commercial businesses should be allowed to continue. New businesses, expansions, or changes shall comply with zoning ordinance. Declining areas should be either upgraded or eliminated. Commercial properties shall have adequate sewage disposal systems. Buffer zones or adequate screening or fencing must separate commercial enterprises from residential properties." Oh, policy I-14 in the comp plan. "All commercial facilities shall provide off-street parking on their sites or within 200 feet of their location." It's in the comp plan, so we can't, we don't have an ordinance that enforces that, but it's an overall, again, concern that we've addressed, there's not maybe adequate nearby parking for them. So. So in responding to them, Lila, do you want to take a stab at drafting something, or, I know you're busy with other stuff. Should I take a stab at drafting something up that's kind of a summary of what we discussed in terms of our code and our comp plan and our just general concerns? And then, maybe you and I can.
That would be great if you wouldn't mind.
Okay, and then maybe we can just fine tune it, and would that be okay with you guys? Just, it would just be a narrative that says, we met, we looked at your proposal, here are the concerns that popped into our minds, that we think you should consider if you're going forward, something like that.
Realize that these are the inherent barriers, or these are the concerns. Yeah, that's, that's a good idea. Probably not gonna like that, it's gonna cost a bunch of money, but.
Well.
But if you're taking on a business and that's your plan, then you have to realize, you have to, you have to spend money and make money. And I just didn't know that we have all these businesses that are running.
There are many surprises in Dune City.
There are, I had to pay thousands of dollars to get permits to build my house. You know? They could do special assessments through property tax for stuff, but, you know, our businesses doing things that are.
Oh, Sean.
Not gonna make friends tonight. Who is that guy? He's the math teacher.
He thinks in numbers.
What do you mean I have to pay for this?
Okay. Okay, well, I think that was a good discussion.
Yes.
We do want to, we do want to encourage commercial development in that area that's been used commercially, but it needs to be done safely and considerably. So.
And we don't want them to be surprised.
No, we don't want them to be surprised. We also don't want them to be, uh, well, we hope they're not the kind of people that are scofflaws and just go ahead and, without considering code or anything else, develop the property, because that would be an issue for all of us as well. So. So, I'll cobble something together that's, that refers to our code, so they can look at that as well, and our comp plan, and just our general comments as best as I can remember them from my notes. Okay?
That'd be good.
All righty, thank you very much.
Last other thing to attempt, and they can ask us questions next time.
Yes, and, you know, if they have other, I think that they're, they just weren't sure exactly what they could do, and so this will give them some information. They can decide how, how much further they can, they can go that they want to go. Should we add that tent camping isn't always very comfortable here in the summertime when it's really windy and rainy, but, or no?
Part of that, doing.
Just kidding.
Doing, doing due diligence is.
To a low extent. They've lived here a while, right?
No.
Or they're not living here.
No.
No.
So, part of doing due diligence is, if I'm somebody and I'm going and I hear about when I moved here, I'm like, what the hell is here? We have to hear it's all over the place. You know, honey been here, this and that, and that one right down the street from that, and so they're, and they're like, oh, we could do.
Yeah, and that's a problem, but that, that particular issue was never addressed, there's nothing we can do about it now that I'm aware of, so we have to just take it into consideration. I think, though, that when we're listing all of these things, the issues with tents would be the fire safety.
That's how you're gonna be able to address it, is like, cool, we have to meet a certain thing, that's a fire code, so.
Yeah, now.
Can you say?
Would building codes come into that at all? Do you know, Lila?
I don't know, but I can, we can ask.
I know that, yeah, but maybe we can find that out, too.
I think you can still go retroactively, take care of your issue with this, you'd be like, hey, we have this coming up, and if you're doing this and you're running a business, this is the precedent standard. That's a lawyer question, but that would be, but you're also gonna have a.
Well, I can also ask, I can. Well, I can also ask, I can also ask state parks.
Do what?
I can also ask state parks about their yurts and what they have to do for getting those.
Certified? What they have to meet?
Yeah, so, okay.
Just make it in your life.
Just talk to my husband.
Yeah, you know, okay.
I know, okay.
Okay, so that will give us something to go forward with that request. The next item of business on our agenda was following up on accessory dwelling units. And you have a memo with a bunch of notes from DLCD and the state. Is that something that you would like to put aside to discuss when we have another commissioner here?
I feel that would be most appropriate.
Okay. Okay, so we'll continue that.
I think you want to have full force here.
I know, me either, but any decisions that are made by two people are somehow uncomfortable to me, so...
Yeah, I think that we had a really rich discussion about this concept. I feel like we accomplished something good. I feel like any big decisions, it would be better to wait for our actual commissioner to at least have a discussion.
Yes, I totally agree. It'd be much better than...
I don't know, to be honest, I'd like to try to keep things like 7:30 here. Be like an hour and a half extra of work.
Okay, so we will keep what is now 8-1 on our agenda for next month. And I don't think that that discussion will take too long. I've already talked about it in quite a bit of detail.
Yeah, I just, I feel more comfortable.
But we'll fine-tune it with the notes that we have and what we know from the state going forward, so we should be able to wrap that up. So, um...
Citizen input, yeah.
Next item is citizen input. Are you signed in, Ms. Jackson?
I am.
You got our three minutes going?
Thank you so much. I think I can give you a lot of information that might be helpful to you, because I grew up right here in Westlake on Hill, and I used to work at Fish Mill Lodges, knew the family well. Things have not changed a lot. And you were right about very narrow roads and things not being updated up there. And it definitely would be a problem for the neighbors. There's many close neighbors, some of them very wealthy, won't be happy. I know a few of them, one is an attorney. And she is concerned, and a lot of them are concerned. They don't like the name either. Why are we calling this the Florence Waterfront? Because that is really misleading. We're not Florence, and actually, we're proud of being Dune City or Westlake. So that's very odd that they're choosing that name. And I hope they understand if they book it, because I know people love Florence, but it is not Florence, this is not Florence. So the name concerns me. Other people are very ambitious, some of their ideas are really interesting. And you guys have had a great conversation. I think you've been very thorough and inclusive of the problems. You were asking about their source of water for many years, and in fact, it became a hot point of contention in the 80s. They have been, like we all were on Hill, have a wonderful spring water. So as far as I know, they don't get their water out of the lake. They might have that for watering the lawn or something, but there's wonderful spring water up there, which they and some of the private neighbors share. Other people who do this all their lives, including my family, were cut off from it. And the very family who was part of founding Dune City got cut off because of what Fish Mill Lodge was doing at the time. Very recently, my niece and nephew stayed there because they love the location, they love Westlake. They were really appalled at how how sadly things have run downhill, to the point it didn't seem safe. You were talking about fire issues. You're right, that's certainly an issue, and, you know, my nephew's a fire chief. And he was very concerned. They checked in, and about an hour later, they checked out because they were very concerned with the state of the buildings. It used to be a charging place back in the 50s and 60s, when I grew up here. And the couple, the family that ran it took great care of it. He now runs the Fishburg Trout Hatchery. And they used to have, like I say, a beautiful pond on the premises. And it was mostly fishermen that stayed there and tourists. And back then, and I don't think it's grown much as far as buildings go, it used to have six cabins, and it had four motel units. And there, each one had their own parking, but there isn't room for a lot of excess parking. And doing big events, you're right, would certainly be a problem. And I hope they've upgraded sewage and water to accommodate all those people they're trying to squeeze in. Having to have a restaurant, too, I know, because my family in the east, we own a restaurant and a motel, that's all kinds of extra issues, as you know. And yeah, absolutely, you should get a business license for each of the businesses that are running off the property. But the worst part is, I just drive up there, the roads are so crowded, they used to actually be walking paths. And so everything's one way, and if someone's coming at you, you have to back out and go the other way. And somebody who had moved a building way in front of where it used to be has made it so hard to go around that corner. You were talking about your surprise bar these can get around there. It is really tight. They put in a great big concrete retaining wall. And I don't know how that was allowed, but it was. Makes it hard for even a car to go by. Because I still have family and friends who live on the hill, and yeah, I think they've bitten up more than they can chew. Certainly weddings are really loud, and you're right, everything you brought up is a real concern. And, but as far as I know, they have great water there. I just hope it won't be too much of a pull on the spring because of some of the other neighbors use the same water. And the family that ran it recently, I know somebody who knew them very well, said unfortunately, when their mom died, the two boys who inherited it have not been taking care of it. They quarrel with one another, and so it really ran downhill. So I'm glad somebody's picking it up and wants to do something nice with it. But you're right, it's not that large a piece of property, and I see a lot of problems if they, I just don't see how they could possibly do all of this. And it wouldn't be a good wedding venue, because your neighbors are literally so close, you'd be driving them out of their mind. I mean, we used to, at our motel, and it was right down on the ocean, we had 60 acres there, people would ask to do weddings, and we usually would discourage them unless it was a timing on, because it really bothers the other people there and the neighbors. It's not a great place to do weddings when you have neighbors that close. And, but it's a gorgeous view, they still have the original dock. I love a lot of things about it. I'm glad somebody wants to do something with it. I'm concerned like you are about the name, about the water, the septic, fire safety, and the narrow roads, so, great conversation.
Thank you. Glad we agreed on something.
Absolutely.
Okay. For the good of the order, comments, please? Nothing from me, okay. Mr. Brinkley?
I think we had a good discussion, so...
Yeah. Thank you. All right?
Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
I didn't hear...
When I said, "Thank you, Ms. Jackson," I think we had a good discussion.
Yeah, I love your idea of notifying neighbors, because, yeah, they are concerned, and they certainly should have a voice in the matter. They're living right next to this business.
That's what we're trying to do?
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn?
You're absolutely right, that's a great idea.
Thank you. There has been a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. And so we are adjourned at 7:30.